Okay, folks, good evening and welcome to this virtual meeting of the Melrose School Committee. The date is April 7, 2020. For the record, the meeting is being livestreamed via WebEx. And the meeting is also being recorded and will be rebroadcast on MNTV. As this is the school committee's first virtual meeting pursuant to Governor Baker's order amending the open meeting law, there will be no live public participation during this meeting. However, members of the public may always share their views with the committee via email at schoolcommittee@cityofmelrose.org. As a first order of business, let me state for the record that the school committee met in executive session this evening to consider a contract for our next superintendent of schools, Dr. Julie Kuchenberger, and that the committee voted to approve said contract for a term of three years. The contract itself will be made available to the public once signed. And this evening, I'm happy to share, we have with us virtually Dr. Kuchenberger. Dr., welcome. I just unmuted you, Julie.
Perfect. Everyone, I hope everybody's healthy and doing well.
We are. Thank you. Nice to see you.
So if I could just thank the committee for approving the contract. I am more than excited and honored to serve the Melrose community. And I am most eager to get, start getting to meet with folks, whether that be virtually or hopefully in person sometime in the near future. But really looking forward to learning more about the community, meeting, you know, meeting with some of the team members and kind of beginning to transition with Superintendent Tamar as she is wrapping up her tenure there in the community.
Well, thank you very much. We're excited to have you onboard. Looking to have you onboard in person, but nice to have you virtually and certainly nice to have an agreed-up contract. And anybody have any questions or comments for Dr. Kay? Mr. Selm, did you have something?
No, I saw Ms. Riscle raise her hand.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Selm. Ms. Riscle, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to send Dr. Kuchenberger a warm welcome. On behalf of the community, we're excited for you to partner with Superintendent Tamar. We know you'll collaborate well together. And you know that we're all here, not speaking for the chairman, but of course, we're all here to support you in whatever way we can. And we're very much looking forward to doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm already feeling the warm welcome. Folks have reached out on LinkedIn, on Twitter, and even a couple of emails. So it's been great to start to connect with folks.
Terrific. Well, we're very excited again, doctor. And we're going to let you go back to your family tonight and we'll move on with our work. But thank you for joining us. And again, a big warm Melrose welcome for all of us.
Thank you so much. Have a great night, everyone.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, friends, moving on. Next up on our agenda are the announcements of the superintendent of schools. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Good evening, everyone. As you know, phase two of our closure began yesterday. We are hoping, with diminished enthusiasm, that we will return May 4. We miss our kids terribly. We want to see them. We want to be involved with them. I think they want to see us. But right now, we'll take this in chunks. This is a more intensive phase of learning. We've gone from continuity learning to advancement of learning. To that end, the district leadership team, approximately 25 people, spent 10 days intensively developing a number of protocols and guidelines. I think most of you have seen them online. We negotiated with the union. I have to tell you, it was a very collaborative negotiation. Everybody's primary concern is the well-being of our children. With that being said, it is important for everybody to understand, this is not school. We cannot replicate, in any stretch of the imagination, the dynamic interpersonal experience of being in a classroom with other students, teachers, and having a cadre of other educators in the building that helps support our children. So this is a difficult way for us to provide instruction. We recognize the difficulty that parents are having. If you're not a teacher, welcome to our world, but you're also balancing the demands of your own profession, which you may be pursuing from home as well as other children. I will tell you that, I think most of you know my practice. My personal practice is to find opportunity and the positives in the most negative situations. And I just said to Margaret Adams today, I think that when we come out of this, we will come out of this with two very good bonuses. First of all, I think it will be an opportunity for families to reset and have time together in our very busy world. And I think it will be an opportunity to rethink how we perceive education should proceed. You know that we were at the forefront of doing a lot of personalized learning, but we did not believe computers could replace teachers. We still do not believe computers can replace teachers. But this has opened everybody's eyes to how adaptable and flexible you need to be in order to provide students with opportunities to learn. And I think it's going to have a tremendous impact on teaching learning as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any comments or questions for the superintendent? If you could literally raise your hand so I could see. Ms. McAndrew, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment and just thank the superintendent and her whole team and every educator in Melrose for the just tremendous efforts that they've gone through over these past few weeks to get kids learning and engaged and excited. I, you know, I know many of us on the committee have children in the school system at various levels. And it's just been really amazing as a parent and a community member and school committee member to see what's going on. I heard my fourth grader on a Google Hangout with his teacher and all of his classmates today. And he, and just hearing all their little voices saying, signing off and how much they miss each other and miss their teacher. It was just really amazing. I know hundreds of parents around Melrose have had that same experience. So I just wanted to thank you and also for people at home to say, keep up the good work. I think whatever you're doing is great and you're doing great in a terrible situation. So, thank you all.
I'll say it, Ms. McAndrew, thank you. Anything else for the superintendent? Seeing none, thank you again, Superintendent. We move on. Next up on our agenda is the consent agenda, which this evening consists of the following items. School committee regular meeting minutes for March 10, 2020. Donations, the monthly summary, and the personnel report. Are there any items which any member of the committee wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, by a show of hand, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Made by Mr. Selm, seconded by Mr. Obremsky. All those in favor? And that motion to approve the consent agenda passes unanimously with one absent. I think Ms. Razzy Thomas is still trying to log on, so we'll look forward to her joining us. Thank you all for that. Next up, the work of our subcommittees. We have one subcommittee meeting this evening, and that is Finance and Facilities with Ms. McAndrew.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
We have three agenda items tonight on FNF. The first to relate to our continued fiscal '21 budget deliberations. And the final item is vote on fees for the Franklin's summer program tuition, if that program happens. But before we jump in on the fiscal '21 budget deliberations, I think it's important to acknowledge the tremendous cloud of uncertainty under which we all are operating. This is true in every aspect of our lives, obviously, and school funding is no exception. At this point, we do not know precisely how the COVID-19 crisis will affect funding for our schools next year, but we know there will be impacts and they are likely to be significant and challenging. We do not know, for example, how state funding will be affected. Though the projections that we've seen on state revenue look pretty grim. We do not know what level our city revenue collections, at which, at what level they'll be affected in areas like the meals tax, excise taxes, growth in new property tax, new growth. But we do know it will be negative, and we also don't know how that will precisely translate to affect the school budget. It's unclear what the federal government will do to assist cities and towns. On the school operating side, there are revenue and cost considerations as well. Just to take one example, we know that our facilities rentals for spring and summer will be down. And so we won't have that anticipated budget support to count on for next year. On the other hand, it's possible that there are cost savings being accrued right now that will carry forward. And of course, there are very real potential long-term impacts of an economic downturn or recession on all these sources of revenue. The superintendent, the mayor, Ms. Secor, and their teams are working through all of this, but the truth is, there's much we don't know. So as much as I know it pains us all to say this, we all have to understand that there will be changes to come in what we've considered so far, and they are likely to be difficult. For now, we will proceed with our budget conversations, recognizing this uncertainty and knowing that we need to remain flexible. We're learning more every day and every week, and at our next meeting on April 28th, we'll have some additional updates to share. And with that, if I might, I'd like to recognize Mayor Broder for some additional comment and considerations before we start.
Thank you, Ms. McAndrew. You really hit the nail on the head. I'll put a little bit of a finer point on it and won't try to take too much time. So as you mentioned, our, you know, our revenue basically comes from two sources, local and state. The state is, well, I'll start with the, well, I'll start with the local property tax is a solid source of revenue because it doesn't depend on anything other than property value, but it certainly depends on people's ability to pay. And we're in a time where the employment picture is going to be very uncertain. We rely on excise tax, which is in large part based on automobile values throughout the city. We expect a significant downturn in car sales, which will impact that revenue source. And certainly, our meals and beverage income from the local option are going to crater. There's no other way to put it. And certainly rentals on both the school side and the city side, thinking mostly about Memorial Hall, are both in tough shape. On the state side, a lot of smaller pockets, but for our purposes, it's Chapter 70 and UGA, or so-called unrestricted local aid. That is, under the Baker administration, that has been pegged to revenue growth. And obviously, the revenue picture is very bleak. More on that in a second. So I don't know if we can expect even level funding there. On Chapter 70, we actually, as you all know, we did pretty well this year in large part because of the Student Opportunity Act funding. Of course, that in the, when that was passed, it did not have a dedicated revenue stream. The plan to pay for it over the six or seven-year implementation was based on revenue growth. That is certainly jeopardy as well. So while the governor's numbers, in the governor's budget, were very favorable to Melrose, I don't think it'd be wise to count on any growth as we go forward. In terms of state revenue outlook, the last, oh, gee, it was in January, the state settled on a, what's called a consensus revenue figure. The House and Senate Ways and Means Joint Session or Joint Committee Meeting are in the process of trying to get a new number on that. They could not go forward with the hearing today. I am expected to go forward a week from today. So hopefully, we'll have a little bit of a better sense from some of the experts that weigh in on that about where we're going to be at. But two, two reports that I've seen are both very sobering. One from Tufts and one from the Mass Taxpayers Foundation. Tufts, that they talk about over the next 15 months, a revenue shortfall of between $1.8 and $3 billion, a decline in tax revenue starting last month, resulting in a $500 million to $750 million hit in the current fiscal year. And certainly, a lot of spending, a lot of spending pressure on social service programs like mass health. Certainly, the, the state does have the rainy day fund and the question mark of where the federal government is going to land in terms of resources. That is, that is all a bunch of guesswork, quite frankly, right now. Mass Taxpayers Federation, initial estimate for this year is $300 to $500 million below benchmark, again, for current fiscal year. They predict, this was probably from, I want to say, March 17th or so, significant likelihood of an economic recession with a very difficult to determine length of time or depth, how long that would last. And they anticipate, and as of a few weeks ago, FY '21 revenues to fall by 3% to 5%, which would be an impact of $2 to $3 billion. And I suspect, unfortunately, that those are fairly rosy estimates. So that, you know, that is regrettably the background against which we're going to have to try to build a budget, recognizing that we really don't know where we're going to land revenue-wise and might not know for a while. Sorry to be doom and gloom. I'm glad Dr. Kuchenberger was off the call. Off we go.
Thank you, Mayor Broder. Continuing on with our agenda topics, again, recognizing there's a lot of uncertainty around this. We had two fiscal '21 topics to cover tonight. The first is special education. And we have talked about special education positions in our staffing discussions. Seems like a, just light years ago, but on March 10th, we talked about some special education positions, in particular at the Lincoln and the middle school, high school. And I see that we're also joined tonight by Ms. White-Lambright. Welcome. And Superintendent Tamar, do you want to talk about, and Ms. White-Lambright, talk about the special education requests in the budget?
Thank you, Ms. McAndrew. First, I just want to make a comment to Ms. McAndrew's and Mayor Broder's comments. I have to tell you, I entered this budget season so excited. As those of you know, this is my eighth budget, seventh budget. And every year, it has been a struggle. Every year, it's been reductions. Last year, it was an A and a B. And I entered this season thinking, we have got it nailed, thanks to the override, thanks to a robust economy. When I sat down with Patrick De La Russo to do what I annually call our dance, we were not that far apart on numbers. And I really thought we were going to have an opportunity here to continue to fulfill our promise to our children. Unfortunately, none of us saw this national and international crisis coming. And at the end of the day, we have a lot of decisions to make. As I've told you in the past, our number one obligation is to keep teachers in front of children. Unfortunately, this is a little harder than it may have been seven, eight years ago when I began. Because as you know from the conversations we've been having, we have a number of children with serious mental health challenges as well as more severe special education challenges. You're all familiar with the children that moved into our district that are costing us, quite honestly, a half a million dollars plus, plus the costs of transportation that have gone up, which Patty will address. When Patrick De La Russo and I talk about this, Patrick understands very clearly that special education is a federal mandate. You cannot not fund special education. And the unfortunate truth of the matter is, it sometimes results in an ugly battle of regular ed versus special ed. I really have, do not want that to happen here. The philosophy of my administration was, we provide any child services who needs it, regardless of labels. To that end, we have built out a lot of integrated programs. But I really ask the school committee to be mindful of this slippery slope as we go into this discussion. With that, I will ask Patty to address some of the challenges we are facing.
Hi. Thank you for having me join the first virtual school committee meeting. I appreciate that. And certainly understand, under the circumstances, when we look at special education, which is a good portion of our budget with high costs associated with it, and I appreciate the backdrop for this discussion. I do like to remind everyone that when we think about special education, it is our obligation to provide services for students from the age of three until they graduate from high school or turn 22. So it's a long period of time that we have an obligation to provide students a free, appropriate public education in the least restrictive setting. To that end, when we put together our budget, we're continually, continually looking at what are our current needs and then trying to project what will our needs be in the future based on the best information we have at this moment in time. Currently, our percentage of special education students remains steady. We have historically hovered around 15% of our total population identified as students with special needs. In comparison, the state's average is about 18%. And we continually are pretty steady around that piece. And again, looking at our budget and projecting our needs, we understand that the way to meet a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive setting is to be able to create programs in district and build the capacity of our special educators, service providers, to support our students in district. That is the least restrictive. It allows kids to be connected to their communities. And it also can be cost-effective when we look at the cost of not only our district tuition, but actually more so the continuing struggles we're having around transportation costs. So I know you've had a chance to look through all of the documentation, but I just want to walk through for anyone who might be watching our live streaming here, looking at our budget. When I sit down and I reflected on the budget, our special ed budget really does look like a opportunity to provide the additional supports that we're looking at. Again, addressing kids' needs around mental health issues. We're looking at adding re-school social workers. We're looking at adding behavioral, board-certified behavior analysts. All of those are the type of positions that help our students' needs be met in district. We're also looking at adding a special education teacher for the Lincoln School. And again, developing programs where both special education teachers, and again, I think last time I had shared that my vision for that position would be a teacher who was dual-certified so that special ed students and general ed students would be able to access this program. Anytime we build a program, there's additional needs in addition to the teacher. A paraprofessional, points of speech pathologist, occupational therapist, physical therapist. All of those components work to support programming in district for our students. We are, in addition to students having more significant special needs, excuse me, more significant mental health issues. We also have a population of students with more significant special needs, physical needs, low cognition, occupational therapy needs, and we have to plan appropriately for those students as well. So this budget reflects our desire to service students within the district. So we wanted to walk through a little bit on the budget. A couple of pieces I just wanted to highlight. If you're looking at the actual budget document, it's page 31 in the packet. You'll notice one area under administrative, special education administrative salaries that we appear to be going down a significant amount. It really isn't an actual decrease. It's just how we're reflecting those salaries. So those are our special education coordinators. And we've accounted for those positions within the buildings that they support. I just wanted to point that out in case anyone had a question about it. Most of our items are pretty steady, except for one that is particularly increased, and that is our special education transportation costs. So again, for those, just to explain, when a student's needs cannot be met within the district and the team determines that a student requires an out-of-district placement, along with that placement is the requirement for us to provide transportation. And the transportation costs have just grown tremendously. A couple of factors are playing into that. We have in-house some special ed van drivers. And we try to provide as much transportation through our in-house van drivers as we can. But every year, it's becoming more and more challenging to actually get people to become van drivers. I think we're competing with, at what was a robust job market. We were competing with Uber, Lyft. People are looking to do those kind of positions instead of coming to be a van driver. At the same time that those positions were becoming available, there were some additional responsibilities for licensure that was put on in order to transport students. Only are we asking for, you know, kind of a higher demand for the licensure. We have a lot of competition out before these positions. So we're just not getting the van drivers. So when we can't do our transportation in-house, we have to go to outside vendors. And I just want to assure you that whenever we go through that, we have a fabulous transportation coordinator, Ricky Angelo. And when we go out for bids, when we're looking for those, we go through a dozen different vendors trying to get the best deal we can. But despite those efforts, sometimes we get to situations where we have to get a student to this placement. We're required by law to do so. And quite frankly, the vendors can put out whatever they're going to put out. And that can be very costly. We have had quotes as high as $300 a day to provide transportation. So thinking about our continuing... So thinking about our continued out-of-district placement needs and the projections of what our vendor costs were, working with Rick and Leah, we're projecting an increase in that area. So that's a significant increase that I wanted to highlight. The other large portion of our budget is our out-of-district costs. And actually, if you look at those costs, although we are asking for an increase, the majority of the increase really is an overall percentage of our anticipation of out-of-district costs going up. As you know, last year, our special ed out-of-district tuitions increased significantly due to two residential movements. And those kind of situations, we can't anticipate or have control over. Once they're here, we have the absolute obligation to meet their special needs. So those two factors continue to greatly impact our out-of-district costs. So I could open, if people have specific questions, I'm happy to answer any.
Thank you. Mr. Abramsky, have a question?
Yes. Will we save any money based on the current situation with out-of-district tuition costs as well as transportation costs?
Patty, do you want me to take this, or do you want to take this?
I can respond to where we are as far as tuition. So we have been in many conversations with the state, and at this moment, the state's direction to us is to continue to pay our out-of-district tuitions. We are doing that because our students who are in out-of-district placements are continuing to get remote learning as well. So the same things we're doing in our district, out-of-district placements are doing. Here's setting up student learning plans. They're working with their staff to provide for services on their IEPs. So we are continuing to pay those tuition costs, so those are not a savings. There, as far as transportation costs, there are some continuing conversations happening around what is our obligation around the transportation cost. So currently, we have not been paying those transportation bills, but there is, again, some continuing conversations at the state level around that.
So let me jump in on that one, Mr. Abramsky. So a couple of things are happening here. So in special ed, if a student doesn't go to, go to an out-of-district placement for 20 days, we can stop paying. And as soon as this situation unfolded, Desi advised us against dropping those enrollments because you could not get the kids back in if we started up in May. So that was one issue. But the other issue is we will continue to get circuit breakup because we are continuing to pay. The issue around the transportation is a lot more difficult. Thankfully, we do not bus in Melrose because I will tell you, my colleagues are in a really intense legal battle around their contracts. The commissioner has urged all of us to continue to pay our vendors, particularly our busing vendors. There is concern if people become unemployed, go on unemployment, and they are not able to be brought back in a timely manner if we resume school. You know, everything is centered around this hopeful idea that we will be resuming school, and we want all services in place that day. So there has been a number of directives around continuing to pay our vendors. I will tell you, many districts are trying to renegotiate their busing contracts because obviously the buses are idle, they're not eating up gas, but they want to maintain the employment of the drivers. So that is an issue in districts that have a lot more busing than we do because we only have a handful of busing contracts around specific children. We have chosen not to pay those handful of contracts. In terms of our own drivers, we are paying our drivers. A decision was made by us and by the city that if anybody is in the budget, you continue to pay them. That is the ethical thing to do. The mayor can weigh in on that if he wants, but that, we are paying our own drivers, and they do have assignments while we are closed. Some of them are helping with the lunch delivery. They delivered packets the other day to families that we needed to get packets to, and they are all engaged in professional development that Patty is directing. So if anybody has questions on those matters.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the superintendent or Ms. White-Lambright on special education?
Real quick.
Oh, Mayor Broder, go ahead.
It's like a presidential debate. My name was mentioned, so I can get to, get to have 30 seconds.
30 seconds.
The, the, I just want to echo what the superintendent said. We are, we are mindful of the stressful nature of these times and are doing our best to keep people employed and, and keep them not idle. So repurposing folks for things like that has been very successful so far. We're going to try to keep it up. So to the, I think it's the moral thing to do, and it's also part of our all-hands-on-deck philosophy, you know, across the park.
Herman O'Connell.
Thank you, Ms. McAndrew. We'll have you, Ms. White-Lambright. I just want to take a moment to thank you and the superintendent. I know this is a bit of field from Budget Matters, but I know as well, during this period of tumult, that the two of you have been collaborating with our Special Education Parents Advisory Committee. And if there was ever a time when we needed that kind of collaboration, it's now. And I know I and my colleagues have been hearing from members of CEP and hearing good things about the work that you've been doing with them, and I just want to take a moment to thank you both for that.
Thank you both. Any other questions or comments related to special education? Seeing none, let's move on to our next topic and the budget deliberations, which is professional development, technology, materials, and supplies. Superintendent Tabor, and I see we also are joined by Ms. Secor. Do you want to briefly go over this topic for us?
Yes. So when we first designed this section of the budget, we just increased everything by 2%. That was a, the 2% increase was a number we were working off of with Mr. De La Russo. I will tell you, in my district leadership team meeting today, we meet at least twice a week and sometimes three times a week, I told staff to begin to look at where they can cut back. I don't know if Ms. Secor wants to weigh in on this, but we do anticipate, unfortunately, that when you have budget shortfalls, the first thing that gets cut is these type of things. The two things that we have to be mindful of in this area is the increase in enrollment. The K is at 335 today, and again, we've got four months to go. And we have some changes in curriculum, thank you to the College Board and some AP courses that we, we will probably need materials for, and the rise and the fact that the Hoover will now have 3-1s, 3-2s, 3-3s, we may need some materials there as well. So I would gladly let Ms. Secor weigh in.
Yes, the first thing we would look to is supplies, obviously, but being mindful of what we need. There are some things that we need regardless of what, you know, enrollment is basically what the driver is. We have to wait and see how the Ks run through, and we will be mindful with everything we do from here on out.
Very good. Thank you. Are there questions related to this portion of the budget from the committee, or any comments? Mr. Som.
Sorry, making sure of the unmuted. Yes, thank you. So we, 11 months ago, started talking or had a talk about the leveling or unleveling, more accurately, at the high school, and a big push and discussion point was the availability of PD for teachers as they went through this process. How do you see our current fiscal environment impacting that PD around specifically that process?
Thank you, Mr. Som. That PD is paid for out of this year, so I think we're secure on it. The bigger problem is, will we be able to get back together? That's the real problem right now. We had hired some PD for the spring. We can have her come in the summer because she's already been paid, plus the other PD we lined up, which we would be paying teachers themselves. We weren't bringing a third-party vendor in for the summer PD. The bigger challenge right now, again, is social distancing.
And if I may add, follow up?
Please.
With regards to distancing and all of the various issues we hear in the media, in fact, my son has experienced with his own classes with Zoom and other web apps like Web. How secure and what is the impact in on professional development with regards to are you able to carry out professional development through PD or a remote access capabilities?
Yes, we are. It's very robust, actually. And again, as I said earlier this evening, I think there's going to be a lot of rethinking about how we do teaching and learning, including PD. Salem State, with whom we have a contract, has gone totally remote, and I'm seeing requests from teachers to participate. Middlesex Partnership for Youth is running a fabulous series that we're encouraging people to engage with around mental health issues right now. We're a member there as well. So there's been lots of opportunities as people have shifted how they're doing PD. The issue with the platforms is more complex. Personally, I am now on five different platforms, including tonight's WebEx. But in the district, we are restricting anything involving students to Google Hangouts. Because we are a Google Ed district, and because you have to go into Hangouts through your Gmail Melrose address, we have a layer of security that you would not have through open source. We have forbid anybody from using Zoom. Luckily, we were ahead of the issue on those when all that erupted and had already put a stop to it. I know some people were unhappy with me, but I discussed it with Neil, with Margaret Adams, with Amy Lindquist, and we were all on the same page. It's better not to take the chance, although there are a number of organizations outside of us who are using Zoom. There are some organizations, including my Merrimack Valley, using GoToMeetings, and when we negotiate with the union, they use Microsoft. But in terms of our children's safety, we are only using Google Hangouts. They comply with all federal and state regulations for student privacy and data.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Som and Superintendent Tabor. Any other questions or comments on PD, technology, materials, or supplies? Seeing none, let's move on to our final FNF topic, which is summer program tuition for Again, assuming we're going to operate under the assumption, Rosie, though it may be, of summer programs operating for now. Who is going to speak to this, Ms. Tabor, Ms. White-Lambright?
Ms. White-Lambright.
Okay, great. And there's also a packet document for members of the public who might be watching tonight with the different increase levels. Ms. Lambright.
Yes, thanks. The documents, package page 35, people are looking. And, you know, again, hopeful that we will be having the opportunity to have summer programming. And again, remember, we have, for summer programming, our general ed summer programming, continue to do in district or in-house, if you will, the programming at Franklin because our students' age, the importance of them knowing the environment, and service providers who continue to run Franklin's stay-in-place summer program as part of ed stations. For grades kindergarten through fifth grade, we contract with Alphabet for that summer programming. So in thinking about Franklin's tuition, last year, the committee voted to increase the tuition rates by 2.5%. And this year, our recommendation is for no rate increase. In talking with Donna Rosso and Leah, we feel that, given our circumstances, we're hopeful to provide summer programming at Franklin and would recommend to the committee that we do not do any rate increase at this time.
Very good. Are there any questions on this for Ms. White-Lambright or the superintendent? Seeing none. This item was not on for a vote tonight. I would be comfortable entertaining a motion for a vote, given the recommendation for a 0% increase if it was the will of the committee to do so, or we can put it on for a vote at our next meeting, which is April 28.
Ms. McAndrew, may I?
Yes.
So while I don't think we need a vote, if there is a general consensus that this will be acceptable because there is no increase, we would like Ms. Rosso to be able to publicize it. Families need to know. You know, again, we understand the uncertainty of whether or not we will have a stay-in-place this summer, but we certainly want to inform families that this is what the tuition will look like if and when we have stay-in-play.
This is Jen. Mayor Broder and then Mr. Som.
No, I'm just making a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve a 0% increase made by Mayor Broder. And could whoever's second raise your hand?
It's Jennifer Rosse Thomas, and you can't see me.
Oh, Ms. Rosse Thomas, I can't see you, that's why.
I ghosted you.
Made by Mayor Broder, second by Ms. Rosse Thomas. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Som, thank you.
I just want to reiterate, I am completely happy to vote this today. However, if we could, this, this, this current crisis has thrown our timelines completely for a loop in terms of the budget process. Could you lay out what the expectation, or maybe Mayor Broder or Superintendent Tabor, can talk a little bit about what they expect in terms of budget timelines?
Sure. Why don't we finish this vote and then have that conversation to wrap up our committee work? Does that make sense?
If it's the will of the committee, absolutely.
Great. All in favor of the motion on the table? And Ms. Rosse Thomas, do you want to say yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So that completes our committee work for tonight. On the topic of moving forward, our next meeting is April 28th. And our meeting after that is the following week, May, I believe. I think I'll ask Mayor Broder to comment on the overall city timeline. I think my expectation, just speaking as one member, is that we will have more information on the 28th, but not enough information to vote on the budget. on the 28th, but not enough information to vote on the budget at that time. That's my current expectation.
I think that's largely correct. The, it's going to be a very hard question to answer at any particular time. Some of the conversations that House and Senate Ways and Means are talking about are not having but doing 112 budgets until there is some kind of light on the horizon, at least about fiscal stability. So we may not have a, you know, a GAA budget until the fall potentially because of the nature of this crisis and the unpredictability of it, given, you know, if this, God forbid, that we get through this and then there's another wave in the fall, that would certainly scramble the situation even more. So it's very hard to say. There is a piece in the charter that sets out a time that was obviously built at a time when this whole situation was a lot more predictable. So I don't feel like we need to lock ourselves into any kind of being certain, we're just going to have to take it as it comes in terms of the revenue picture.
Thank you. Mayor Broder, can you just define some of those terms for maybe folks who are watching, a 112 budget?
Sure. So and very often, when, this is true of the state and some municipalities, if you can't, for whatever reason, agree on a budget, in some of the bad old days, the state, the House and the Senate would fight about budgets well into the, well into the summer, they would be forced to do a 112th, or basically a month-at-a-time budget, just to keep the government opening and, the government open and funds flowing and programs supported until such time as they could land on the GAA or the budget as finalized, passed by the House and the Senate, signed by the governor.
Thank you. So I recognize that's a lot of uncertainty, but I think one thing we can take away from this conversation is that we won't be voting on the final budget at our next meeting as originally anticipated in the timeline, and that we, pending further information from the state, the city, and also advice from Amy and from City Split Service and Kempin, which we asked for also today about the charter deadlines, et cetera, that we may certainly be going well into May, if not beyond.
Ms. McAndrew, may I?
Yes.
So one of our obligations is a public hearing, and I think we need to post that, what, 30 days in advance? Is that the requirement? I'd ask Amy. So I think at the very least, you need to have a public hearing so that when you can move on the budget, you're able to. So I think the committee needs to plan that.
And I think that that was envisioned for the 28th at our next meeting, and we can talk about whether or not that still makes sense, given the tremendous amount of uncertainty that we have.
I think that given-
How we will do that in the current-
Given the notice that you have to have for a public hearing, you should have the hearing regardless and let the public weigh in on the uncertain economics that we're facing so that the committee can consider their thoughts on that matter.
Well, we'll proceed as with, as we, as the schedule for the hearing is now and hope that we at least have some additional information by then. Are there any other questions on the timeline, general budget picture? Seeing none. Ms. Rosse Thomas, I can't see you, so I'll just ask you, do you have any other questions? I think that is a no. Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so thank you all. That concludes FNF. Until next time.
Thank you, Ms. McAndrew. And that brings us to the announcements of the chair. I mentioned earlier the Melrose Special Education Parents Advisory Council and their collaboration with the administration. They can be reached at melrosecpac02176@gmail.com, and they can be followed on Facebook, Melrose Special Education Parents Advisory Council. That said, is there a motion to adjourn? Made by Mr. Obremsky, seconded by Ms. Driscoll. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Rosse Thomas, and thank you all for your cooperation and collaborations, and I much appreciate it. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone.